All right, so I saw that we are starting our live streaming, so I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals regular meetings scheduled for Wednesday, December 22, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Let's do roll call of all those that are here. Joanne Hogan.
You're present.
Thank you. Mark Freeman.
Here, present.
Present. I myself, Steve Antonio, I'm here, I'm present, and I'd like to appor- appoint Ally Rice. If that's okay, Ally?
Oh, that's fine. Yeah.
All right. And we also have Ram has joined us. So Ram, you're here in present, correct?
I'm sorry?
We're doing roll call, so just say here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Sorry.
Thanks, Ram. All right. With that being said, let's get right into it. Our first application is application 21-13 of Simsbury Public Schools owner, SLR International Corporation applicant for variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 3.9, to allow grandstand and press box within the side yard setbacks at the property located at 34 Farms Village Road. Who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant?
That would be me. This is Kevin Fusiliere, Principal Landscape Architect with SLR International Corporation. I saw also on this call is Jeff Penny, the Athletic Director for Simsbury High School. The plan was, I was gonna quickly go through the presentation we gave last time, but mainly focus on the the revisions we made to the plans based on the feedback we got at that last meeting and back in October. So if I can, I'll share my screen.
It should be clear to do that.
All right. Does everyone's, that's my email, that's wrong. Okay, let me try this again. PowerPoint slideshow. Sure.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing your.
Yeah, we are seeing your PowerPoint.
Yep, and let's. Appeal calendar, let's try this one.
There it is.
Okay.
Got it.
All right. I don't know why I can't maximize it, but this should do. All right. So again, I'm Kevin Fusiliere with SLR. We're talking about the grandstands at the high school campus on the western side of the property. That's just a bird's eye showing the approximate property line that we're up against. The existing grandstand and press box, if you recall, it's not up to code. It's undersized, both the press box and the seating capacity. And it's tucked up right in between the existing running track turf field and the property line on the western side. Just some of the pictures of the existing conditions. There is a CMU storage building beneath the structure. Its roof is integral to the existing grandstand structure, and then the press box up top. So the revisions that we made that I'll discuss tonight that we changed based on the feedback we received, we reduced the overall size of the grandstand from 1,313 seats down to 1,082. And we did this by eliminating the top two rows of seating. To do this, we had to, we had a lot of meetings, discussions, and looked at this a bunch of different ways. And the only way we could accommodate it was by removing the existing storage building below the show, below the grandstand. This would permit the smaller footprint and actually allow us to lower the structure overall. The setback from the property line, if you recall last time, we were looking for about a decrease from 21.7 down to about 15 and a half feet. This new footprint maintains 21.7 just at one location, and that's one of the required landings for the press box. So it's not seating, but we're maintaining the existing separation. The ADA ramp went from a switchback configuration to a linear. I know that was a concern because that put a lot of the ramp in the building setback, so we've greatly reduced that impact. And then we also, to accommodate some of the neighbors' requests, we're gonna raise the railing at the top row of seating from four feet to six feet and provide a privacy screen on that front fence. So only the very tallest people would be able to look over the top and into the property line. But as I mentioned, the overall structure is getting a little bit lower by us removing that storage building that was kind of forcing the configuration before. So this was the previous removals plan, which showed maintaining that existing building. And it was highlighting in yellow here that 21 feet, 21 foot seven separation to the property line. What we're now doing is we're removing the entire structure. And what I didn't highlight last time, this shed that's out there is actually a little bit closer, 21 feet point five. So that's still gonna be removed, but I just wanted to point out that that's actually a little bit closer to the property line. So the revised section is just the whole thing's gonna get removed now. That building is no longer to remain. This was the old site plan with the 1,313 seat configuration where we were showing, you know, we're getting to 15.4 feet. The switchback ramp configuration dashed out in red is the existing grandstand structure. What we're looking at now is a smaller structure. But you can see all the seating is getting further away from the property line. And only at this northern landing for the press box are we maintaining the existing 21 feet point seven, 21.7 feet of separation. I didn't highlight in gray, but you can see the ADA ramp heads off to the north in a linear fashion. And it's just tucked back a little more than normal because we have to avoid an existing light pole. This was the previous elevation, showing the existing building to remain, raising the structure up to avoid it. And what you don't see here is that there would be seating all the way up to this back line location. This is the new proposed structure. You can see it's lower than the old structure. It's moved in closer, seating stops at the front of the press box. And we actually slid it a couple of feet closer to the track. We wanted to maintain enough room for ADA access in front of the track, which we have done. But by sliding everything forward, we believe we're making a better condition than currently exists. The reasons for the variance is clear that, you know, there's a 40-foot building setback in this zone in this existing structure, and the really the only location for grandstand is within that structure, within that setback. I won't read through all these bullets, but that's the general idea. The hardships are that the current stands don't meet ADA and state building code. The existing grandstand and press box are undersized for the school. And there are really no other locations on the site to accommodate this facility. Just some pictures of the crowded press box and packed grandstand on game day. So even though we're not expanding to where we wanted to, we're expanding to where the school's satisfied that they'll be getting additional seats for the spectator experience. So we went over the alternates last time. We looked at retrofitting the existing structure to make a meet code. And that was unachievable, given the age of the structure and a lot of unknowns with the construction of the structure. The hardship I, or the alternative that I boxed is what we pursued. And if before, when we kept the storage building, it was restricting alternative configurations, but by eliminating that building, we were able to not necessarily lessen the setback encroachment, because there is that one spot. But seating and spectators will be getting further away from the property line. And then the other alternative was, well, let's find another location for it, but as discussed, the other side of the track doesn't have enough room, given the parking lot. And the fact that the track and the field are there, this is really our only location. So that was my quick presentation. I'll go back to the plan that we're proposing now. And I'd be happy to open it up for questions unless Jeff Penny has anything you'd like to add to this.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I was available to answer questions if anybody had any specifics. Good evening, everyone. In regards to how we currently use the facility or how we're able to make changes in order to accommodate the requests of this group.
Okay, I'll start in, since we seem to have hit pause. I've got a couple of points. You know, before we discuss amongst ourselves, for clarification, does anyone have any questions about the presentation?
I just was back to this number of seats. You're gaining seats or you're losing seats?
Losing.
Well, we're losing seats from the original proposed grandstand.
But you're gaining seats from what's there now.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
This is Ram. I have one question. The storage building, is that used for storing the equipment? If so, by removing it, what is the alternative for storing the equipment?
So the original proposal, that building's pretty worn out. The roof membrane that is integral to the grandstand substructure is far from weather tight. There's a lot of rodent damage to the structure, so had we pursued keeping that, they were gonna, the school was gonna spend a significant amount of money building a new roof and weatherproofing it. But it was kind of a tricky situation because we are in a floodplain here. There's only so much modifications you can do to a non-conforming structure in a floodplain. So we would had to look at if with the cost to do the repairs exceeded a certain value, that building would have had to been floodproofed anyway. So it may not have fit the budget. By removing it, and yes, it is used for storage of track and field equipment and probably some football equipment. But the new structure will have a fully chained chain linked in sort of perimeter, so that will be secureable and items that can be exposed to the elements, which most track equipment and football equipment can can securely be stored underneath the structure. So yes, losing the building wasn't ideal. We wanted to accommodate the comments received at the last meeting. And the only way we could figure out a way to do it was by removing that building. So there may be, we may be here at a future meeting trying to get a new building constructed, but that is no longer part of this project.
So speaking of which, the way grandfathering works to my status is once you remove something and take it out of existence, you can no longer utilize it. Why are you removing the shed? Because once you remove it, it's gone forever. I doubt we'd ever grant you a variance to put that shed where it is.
Well, with the configuration of the new ramp, I don't think you would want to put it back there. It's kind of gonna, it's gonna be hidden in a non-accessible area. Yeah, I'm just looking at the other side, and we haven't discussed relocating it or rebuilding it as part of this project elsewhere. But I could see it going to the south side, which then would put it, give us room to be outside the setback. But Jeff can maybe speak more to.
That said, remove it as part of.
Yes, we are removing it. We're not proposing to re, to put it anywhere back as part of this project.
Well, I'll cut to the chase. Why won't you put your equipment in it?
It's not nearly large enough. The, that shed is, and I'm gonna guess of the dimensions, it's probably 12 by 15. The storage building underneath the shed is much, much, much larger, at least five times the size. So that we literally could not put, we couldn't even fit just the hurdles in that shed. It's really an unfunctional building for us at this point. We don't utilize it for concessions. And given the way that we need to accommodate the structure, it makes sense to remove it. We can't currently use it. The condition it's in and the size is not adequate to function as a concession stand, as it was probably originally intended.
All right, well, it's a reduction in nonconformity, so we appreciate that effort, or the consideration, rather. One other consideration that I know some neighbors have brought up are a particular arborvitae. The greenery behind us has also, I guess, passed away, and it has a bunch of vines that are aggressive. I can't think of the word, I'm sorry. And a giant arborvitae was proposed. Is there any way we could get, you know, that aspect as part of this? Do you understand what I'm saying, trying to say?
Yeah, so.
Screening is what I'm talking about.
I'll go out on a limb and say, and speak for Jason Casey who's not on, and Jeff can defend me here. But I don't see any issue why we would not accept that condition to fill the gap and and have an arborist come in and clear some of those vines off the the existing arborvitae hedge that's healthy. It's my understanding that at one point a tree fell over from off the property and did take out one or two of the existing arborvitae. So as long as there's an understanding that what goes back will not be as full and mature right away at planting. I don't, it won't blow the project budget by adding a tree or two to this, to this project, so.
I appreciate.
Accept that. Yep.
Dave, this is Bill Freeman, and that's my property that you're discussing. I'm just west of the bleachers. And hi to everybody. Jeff, how you doing?
If you don't mind, Bill, if you could say your property address just for the.
Number two, Weldon Way.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that, Steve, I had written you about that, about the boundary being, lack of a better word, being beefed up. Because there are a lot of holes in it right now, and the school and Jeff were good enough about reinforcing the chain link fence a year or so ago, because there was a lot of encroachment from the school property onto our property. So anything that the school can do in this project to enhance that barrier between us visually, and it also provides some sound protection as well, we would certainly appreciate. I have one, I have one question for Kevin. Kevin, early in your presentation, you said that the bleachers are gonna be lowered from the original plan. By how much?
It's not too much, but you can see in this graphic, the red outline represents the existing structure, which is just under 35 feet tall. I would say because we're able to go lower because we're not accommodating that building, it's gonna be about a two or three foot lowering of the structure. It's in between two and three feet. The other thing to take note, and this is more of a screening thing. The two rows of seats on either side of the, the press box are going away, but the press box is about doubling in length. And even though you're looking at the back of a press box, it's more of a solid structure that may provide additional sound barrier for you. Just something to mention.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And you did hear me say that top rail, while it's not shown here, rather than be four foot, which is represented where my cursor is, we're gonna add an additional two feet to the backside and cover this in a windscreen, a mesh windscreen that will provide additional privacy.
Okay, very good. We appreciate it. Thank you.
And I would be happy to, you know, after, granted, we get this approval and we move forward, we'll be going to planning and to zoning next. I'd be happy to meet and identify the exact number of trees and locations, so those get on the record and for that plan submission.
Yes, I would.
Welcome him to come here.
Yeah, we would, my wife and I, who's sitting next to me here, would welcome that, Kevin. Anytime, just reach out to us, please, and we would appreciate that.
And we would.
Okay.
Need to come here and actually see what we see from here.
Sure.
I think that would be extremely helpful for you.
Yeah, Kevin, if there's any need for, if there's any need for information, I can help facilitate that. We have the Freeman's contact information.
Excellent. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is there any other member of the public? I thought there was one other person here that would like to speak on behalf of this application or ask any questions? Once we close it, we can just deliberate amongst the commissioners.
Dude, can I, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
So I've been in the role that I'm in now currently for six years. And I will tell you that I annually get a number of phone calls and complaints from parents with small children. What you can't really appreciate unless you've been to the high school and seen these and been on these bleachers is the rise between steps and how, it's an original 1968 design, they're very difficult to get up or get down, but you can also get through them. So there's spacing between them, and there's a concern that's brought to me every year from a number of people about the safety of the bleachers as they currently exist in their 1968 form. So I just wanted to make you aware that that was kind of the impetus for us starting this conversation and is trying to get ADA compliant. I will share with you that one of the teams that we play every year has a coach that is disabled. And to be honest with you, it takes several volunteers to carry this person up the bleachers to get them into the press box.
Wow.
Because of the significance of the rise in the way that the bleachers currently exist. So to be able to make them ADA compliant, to make them safer for our families is really the goal behind this project. And I appreciate everybody's feedback and, you know, hopefully helping us to move this forward.
I've got a curiosity question. How would someone with a disability get up to the press box? Is there a way for them? They'd still need to be carried, right?
So if the rise, he's, he's a, he's a very small gentleman. And he would be able to go up most sets of bleachers using the handrail, which we don't have. And he's able to actually pick his feet up, what I would call a standard rise. Our rise currently is so high, and he's such a small gentleman that he can't pick his legs up high enough, and he has nothing to hang on to. So he would be able to climb a standard ADA compliant set of bleachers in order to get into the press box.
That's interesting. Thank you. That's a great consideration. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have any other questions of this application before we close the hearing and move forward?
Yeah, just real quick, Steve, for Kevin, do we know if removing that shed will increase noise at all? Is that, is that any type of dampener? Or is it like, is it hollowing out the area so the noise will echo more? Or I don't know if you have any idea about?
The shed here or the storage building?
The, the storage one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, it's a structure, but I think the new grandstand structure with all the code compliant components, like they're gonna be solid, solid boards under each set of seats. I think you're gonna get more dampening overall from having a structure that's built to the current standards and codes. I don't think that, that concrete building would be a significant sound barrier. I think, I think the new system will be better, equal if not better.
Excuse me, guys, hold on.
My God.
We've been, we've been attacked.
Not we, you have been, Tom. I'm fine here.
The last three that just came in are back in the waiting room. We're done.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. But continuing on our thread, does anyone else have any additional questions or comments before we close the hearing and deliberate? All right, hearing numb, none. I'd like to, you know, say our disclaimer, we always make a motion in the affirmative at this point. It is neither an approval nor the lack of approval. But we will make a statement that, for the affirmative, for the acceptance of this, and then the commissioners will deliberate. But only responses from town staff and the commissioners will be allowed from here on out. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 21-13 of the Simsbury Public Schools owner, SLR International Corporation applicant for variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 3.9, to allow grandstand and press box within the side yard setbacks at the property located at 34 Farms Village Road. Can someone second that, and then we can deliberate?
Second. Second, that, Steve.
Second.
Tom, you decide who that was. And having that, we don't need to vote yet. We just need to start our deliberation. I'll start out if it's okay. The good faith effort, you know, I am very appreciative. I feel we've done pretty much everything we asked for as far as a reduction of noncompliance. This is a good project. I feel it brings a net benefit to neighbors and school participants alike, so I don't really have much to say. I think the fact that they're even willing to do away with the shed speaks to, you know, their their opinion that they're trying to move forward with a goodwill gesture. Would someone else like to speak about how they feel about this or anything we should discuss as far as contingencies? That being said, let me just say, for the contingencies, I think we, we should initiate that the screening in the landscape form be added as a condition of this approval.
Agreed.
I agree, yeah.
Does anyone have any other points or conditions we should consider before the potential approval of this application?
No, I think that the collaboration that occurred has resulted in a lot of decisions being made that work for, I think, for everybody involved, as far as I can see. They're reducing their nonconformity, they're making all their ADA changes. The noise situation should be improved, privacy should be improved, so privacy for the neighbors. Seems like a lot of positives.
Okay, a lot of head nodding. Would anyone else like to speak to the application before we, somebody makes a motion? Okay, if someone else wants to make the motion, the hardships that we've seen are the current stands don't meet ADA code and compliance. They're undersized for the school population. And the one condition that I am aware of is landscape screening to be installed and maintained. And a giant arborvitae was mentioned as a particular species that would be favored if possible. Does someone else want to make the motion?
I can make the motion.
The one named Joanne?
Let me know if I miss anything, okay?
You bet.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve application 21-13 of Simsbury Public Schools owner, SLR International Corporation applicant for a variance pursuant to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section 3.9, to allow for grandstand and press box within the side yard setback at the property located at 34 Farms Village Road. Assessors map F11, block 148, zone R40. With the stipulation that greenery, specifically arborvitae, perhaps will be planted to fill in the holes in the hedge and that the the setbacks that they have outlined in their drawings will be maintained. Did I miss anything?
You have to say the hardship.
The hardship being that it will, it does not presently conform with ADA building codes. And, and again, the setback will be reduced. There will still be a setback, but it will be reduced.
Okay, would someone like to second that?
From 15, from 21.7 to 15.4 feet.
What?
The setback reduction.
No, it's maintained at the same of 21.7.
Oh, it is?
From 20, yeah.
Okay.
So just strike that.
So maintaining, so maintaining the setback that exists now.
All right.
Okay, sorry.
It's a net reduction in nonconformity. That's what matters. Who would like to second this? Sharon, you have said nothing. All right.
Mark.
So, so Steve, I'm gonna abstain anyway because it's, you know, having to do with the.
That's understandable, just to make sure your microphone's working. All right, well, we've had a motion and a second, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
One opposed.
And abstain is Sharon. So you passed. Thanks, guys. We appreciate you taking your time and consideration for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Jeff, take care.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Okay, moving along, General Commission business, there's a proposed 2020, 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting calendar. Seems pretty basic. Does anyone have any comments before we vote on it?
It's just like fourth Wednesday of the month, right? No changes.
Yeah, no changes.
Pretty much, yeah.
It tends to stay consistent.
Now, June, I think, isn't the fourth Wednesday. It might be.
No, it is.
Other important thing is we do meet in August, whereas most commissions don't. That is something we decided, and if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to leave it as a potential for people that need us. So with that being said, would someone like to make a motion regarding the proposed ZBA meeting calendar? You gotta say it out loud, Sharon.
I, I'd like to make the motion.
To approve it.
So I'd like to make the motion that we approve the current schedule for 2022.
And who would like to second it?
Second. Oh.
I'll give it to you, Ally.
All right. All right, all those.
Moving it along here.
Ram and Joanne, did you guys vote in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no one less left to be against or abstain, so that passes unanimously. Our minutes of October 27, 2021 are lengthy, but I did, oh, hold on.
They were so lengthy. I read them. Man, those were long.
That's how I prepared for this meeting. That's how I remembered it.
Very informative, very informative.
Uh, I, I noticed one thing, though. Um, uh, Mar's name is in both attendee list and the absent list.
Okay, Mark, were you at that meeting?
Uh, I missed, I missed November.
Yeah, that. We didn't have a meeting in November.
So I missed October. I missed October.
Okay.
That's okay. Cause I remember your dad saying, where's my son?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. I slept on that one.
So we're going to have one abstention, which is nothing wrong, but did anyone find anything wrong with the minutes other than Mark is li- is listed as there, but not there?
I was in two places at once.
At one time.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes with the acknowledgement that Mark Freeman was absent from the meeting, not in attendance.
That'll be corrected.
Who would like to second it?
I say.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Against, abstain. Sharon abstains. And it passes. Um, so one, one other thing I just want to make sure everyone is aware of. Our town planner, Mike Liddon, has, uh, honestly, just like Bill Volknor did many years ago, he's moved to Cheshire. It is a huge loss. Um, but I am psyched that we maintain. Tom Hazel, I'm just saying that because Tom's here. No, seriously.
No, and Laura too. We're a dynamic duo.
The core team. We have Tom Hazel. We've got Laura Barglowski still here. And we've got the new guy, Joe, still here. So our core team is still very much. Um, but I know personally I'll miss Mike. He was a great town planner and, um, it's a huge loss for our town. Uh, it's a huge game for the town of Cheshire. So someone's going to win, someone's going to lose. Uh, we'll see who comes, comes and fills in this role as we progress. But being, um, part of the zoning hierarchy, I felt that we should all know that. There's nothing beyond that. Um, with that being said, I hope everyone has a ho- happy holiday week. And, um, that's it for this year. Would someone like to make that final motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Sorry.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Who wants to second it?
I'll second.
I'll give that to Sharon.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all so much.
Everybody have a nice Christmas.
Have a great holiday.
Happy holidays.